This conference will now be recorded.
America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, invisible liberty and justice for all.
Did anyone like it? Sure. Okay, under court items. Regular board meeting minutes from August 15th.
Second.
All in favor? Item B, fire department driver posting position.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Get ready.
So the wages on the union. Anything else we need to discuss before? Okay, we had a person second, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C is the World University Games issue MAGA PAC program. We had a chance to discuss that. Does anyone have any further questions?
How much do I need for a contribution?
12,500. I'm just hearing very positive things about it. I'm gonna send it. I think it's an awesome program.
Yeah, it's great. Anyone want to make a motion? It's great for our kids.
I'll make the motion.
Well, let's face it, everything we do here includes the children. And the experience why we still. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Item B, promo safety and security course, October 28th in Elizabethtown. You know Anita's going to that and who else?
So actually, I spoke to Chuck today because you asked me if he was going. But as I sort of expected, this is kind of low level for Chuck when I asked him that. He said, I've talked to these courses before. But he did say he would like Stacy to go and they welcome two people from each municipality. So if they're fine with all of you, then like Stacy, envision to me.
Any questions?
I was gonna ask her if she has people that they have a program like that. For reference people.
They totally should. We got these days.
The other guy, I don't know if you're sure about it. The police had a good dog and it's pretty scary.
At our protest.
At our protest.
Oh, at the hotel.
A motion to send two people to.
I'll make some options.
To the second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. Northwood School rolling program request. Are we happy?
We're just ratifying.
A first and a second?
I don't even.
And so ratified?
Yes.
Okay. Lake Plaza Village stroll, I don't believe anyone's here to talk about that. But you say this every year. I don't, you know Jackie, if there's any changes or anything special?
No, it's, they're staying along the same line.
Staying to the normal program. Okay.
Have they found somebody to run it?
Sort of. It's not cooperative up there.
Oh geez.
And Mark, when you say the usual program is it the COVID program or back to the normal? You will log and all that?
Uh, I haven't heard you log down.
Yeah, I am. They're having a staffing shortage.
Shortening the volume here. So hopefully it's gonna be driven by Roost a little bit more than it has in years past.
Yeah, they're the ones who made the request, so.
The only thing I want, you know how when LP23 made a request for the use of Mids Park? And all of a sudden they snuck in the band show? Do we, I guess when requests come through, do we need to be all inclusive? Is Mids Park, the assumption that it is the band show? Or is it Mids Park just the two levels and the lawn? What is Mids Park?
Is it assumed the band show?
That's, I kind of assume that.
You have to assume the band show.
That's kind of at a time of the year where I shouldn't be as big a problem as it would be later on in the year.
But they want the Christmas tree brought in and lighted, right?
Yes.
So that's the electric department.
Right. And that's the bigger plan for getting ready for Main Street for the LP for local universities.
And we are not planning on putting a tree in Roost Park, correct?
We are not planning.
Okay, just making sure of the trees that are there.
Right, but also I think we're, LP23 is putting something there.
I was just gonna say we can light a torch instead. Can that be done in Christmas?
Yeah, and ask, that's correct because they don't have it. But they are planning on it.
Okay, do we think we, do we know enough of what they're asking to approve it?
Oh, for Mids, Village Stroll, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, did we give a first and second? No, first and second.
Move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, good cause. Anything else to come from the court?
A couple of little things have come up. So speaking, Mids Park of the LP 2023 is back and would like to reschedule that event. And I didn't bring down the printout, but I think the date they're looking at is Friday, September 23rd. Chuck said there's no conflicts that he knows of, I don't know of any. So I assume it's just a rubber stamp since we already approved it once, but.
There's gonna be a van, I mean, this was the whole thing.
A volunteer, that's already.
It's a, no, it's a recruitment for volunteers, but they'll also have music in the band show.
Right.
We probably.
They need insurance.
Yes, I told them that.
I should probably know this, but when, is there anything to be done with our going and getting the plane? I know we're doing something in New York on the 22nd.
Yeah, you are.
But nothing that you know of as.
That when you bring it back, what we do with it, that will be, I think, does it stay in a glass case? I don't know.
I just wondered, I was just gonna.
But it needs oxygen. Which doesn't, it's LED.
Yeah, it's actually the LED.
Okay, well, so.
It needs electricity.
What you need then is for them to use.
Yes, I don't know if we need to really approve Janet or, I mean.
Well, I would think the new, the new date.
Okay, so we can do that.
And maybe ask them to have some information a week in advance. What's the band, what's the, do we know the hours? Do you know anything about it?
She sent it to me the last time, so I'll re-forward the extended details.
This is what was supposed to happen two weeks ago?
Yeah, the weather.
Re-reaching out.
Yeah.
I hope they find somebody to be the moose.
They have to be.
Okay, great.
Well, something is on the Thursday at the school.
Do you know something?
John Lundin has been doing it. And he can.
I guess they all brought COVID back from the fair. Like that's.
Another story. Okay, so.
Anyone want to first and second the Mids Park?
I first did it.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Okay, and that was the 23rd?
Yes, I will confirm that, but wait, that was the date they gave me.
That's a Friday.
Yes, it was definitely a Friday. Then we also, this afternoon, received trustee Leon's resignation. If you would all like to accept that.
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So passed.
And thank you for it.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say Jason's.
14 years later.
13, isn't it? 13 and a half, yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, just like to say thank you for all the years of service you put in. I'm sure it'll serve us well in the town.
And the final, last minute request I received was the noise ordinance permit application for a wedding.
Wait, do we need to approve that?
If you all.
Do we need to approve that for the resignation?
Yes.
Okay, so first.
Oh, sorry. We're accepted, I guess.
Yes.
Oh, no, well, we did, we did, yeah.
We did, I made motion second.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah.
Try to keep up, right? Okay, sorry, next.
Noise ordinance permit application for a wedding happening at Lake Plaza Golf Clubhouse on October 8th? Possibly, the requister is on the line, Ms. McFadden, is that you caller number one?
Yes, it is. Hi, Aaron, how are you guys?
So I gave the board the application and they are familiar with your wedding planner. I don't know if the board has any questions. In the application, she says that the music will move inside after 6:00 PM. So I think it's just a matter of if there's people milling around outside or there won't be any amplification after 6:00 PM outdoors. And I don't know if you want to add anything, Ms. McFadden?
Um, yeah, just, yeah, we're gonna move inside for the reception after 6:00 PM. There may be people outside, but everyone in our party is very respectful. We also, the DJ that we have, he's very familiar with the venue and he even had a wedding there last weekend. So I think he kind of knows like what the expectation is and to keep everything, you know, respectful and for everyone that lives around that area.
Okay, can the normal procedure is to get signatures from people around? Or is that even necessary?
Signatures just.
You know, if they need another person. But is that even necessary if they're not gonna be asked or no one's very.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I couldn't see any reason why. Okay, so, you know, we do have a wedding planner again that is known in the area that can vouch for this. And we do have the same DJ. Does anyone have any questions or see any reason we shouldn't grant this? If that's the case, so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Yes, have a great wedding.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, that is all, that is all for me.
Moving into treasury items. Warrant's not dated number two. Thought I had a chance to see them. Jackie, glad to see you. Thank you again. You're probably gonna have to do more now that Jason's not here, but. Do I have a motion to accept the warrants?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jackie. Anything else to come from treasury?
No, it's okay. Spending money again.
This was a big one, I heard.
It was, yeah, well, it's your credit, it's money, so.
Thank you for our fund out.
Yeah, and we did got some big ones coming in, so it's good. Oh, and Kerbriki's blocking off parking in front of, we're stretching the park tomorrow to put in lateral. So.
You said propane tank.
That's Jay.
Some, interesting, they ride around.
No.
Very propane tank. Where is that? Under the sidewalk.
Oh, is that what's there?
Very propane tank, under the south entrance to the.
By Oz.
Not in use.
Not in use, but it was when that went there.
Who dug it up, Oz, right then?
No.
That's good.
Oh, man.
But it's not like an oil or gas tank.
No, it's a propane.
So it can just be taken out?
Yeah, that's what they did.
Great.
Thank goodness.
Yeah, we weren't expecting that.
There's a lot of tanks on Main Street.
Lucky we've never.
I'm a Lindbergh baby, that's what you did back then.
I wonder if that's from fire.
I couldn't believe when they dug up this part of the road, all the trees that they kept coming out of the road, the big stumps. Because when they created the road, they just fell all the trees into the road and then started up.
Different time.
Sticking up stuff.
Apparently a tree does not decay once the air can't get to it for a very long time, yeah. Okay. Obviously, if you do new business last, because it could take longs to everything, but here we go. Set a public hearing for short term rental moratorium extension, September 19th. And as we all know, we have to tell Janet what the moratorium is going to be for, so. If we don't do it right now, we talked about going till next week and having another discussion on it. I guess are we prepared right now to have that so that we can give this to Janet? So in three days' time, we can get something in the paper so that we can have the meeting on the 19th.
My gut size, we should not extend the moratorium to Main Street and the corridor because it's gonna take too long to rescind that. We should just have the moratorium be extended to residential districts in South Lake.
Peter?
I agree with Mark.
Jackie?
I agree.
Okay, that makes it really easy, so then.
So I will rewrite the extension, will only apply to village residential, town residential, and that portion of South Lake which is in the village. Correct?
Yes.
Correct. I'll get that to you in the morning.
Great, so we will plan on having a more, uh.
Public hearing.
Public hearing on the moratorium extension on September 19th at 4:45, I believe, that's. Okay.
And like I said.
You think that will be enough time if you're gonna have your regular meeting at 5? It's public address and we did 4:30, right?
Oh, yeah.
We could do 4:30, I mean, it's fine to have a gap of time if we run out. Yeah. If it works for everyone else, then let's do 4:30.
For the public here.
For the public hearing and we'll have our meeting at 5. And all three of you have to be there or this cannot happen.
Either way.
Yeah.
Here.
Here.
Okay, good. You actually did very well with that one, then, okay. Anything else on the new business? Old business. One of the topics we have talked about and we, I think it's, has it been in the paper twice now? Or how many times have we changed the power outage dates?
A good time.
A good time, yeah. So the latest now is a compromise between businesses and the locals getting people ready in the morning. And we've now come up with 9 o'clock at night for it to go out and 7:00 in the morning for it to come on. Problem before with 10 and 8 was it didn't give parents any time at all to have their children have breakfast and get going in the morning. We'll all pray that this job goes smoothly quickly and that it's done even before that. But for now, we're going to go with 9:00 PM until 7:00 AM. And hopefully we're back after you order the channel again.
The 20th. With the date of the 21st.
And also just to keep in mind, I don't know if it made it in the paper before, but this is a really lucky chance that we have with the World University Games coming to make sure that our line that comes in is beefed up, good poles. It's not a guarantee that a power pole can't be broken down or have a problem. But this is really gonna give us a lot of help between older poles being replaced with metal and.
For sure, Public Service Commission, lead on National Grid.
Exactly, this was, this is because of the University Games. This was a pure gift we got. I mean, we talked for a long time about having this done and we're very lucky to have it done. And the inconvenience hopefully won't be that bad.
I think the other thing of the old business, and since Janet's here, we can ask her. Do we, if we want to extend the parking enforcement times to 8 o'clock, do we have a public hearing for that?
Um, I was not, I didn't know that question before coming, so I don't know.
You and I had that conversation.
We had the conversation.
It's set time to be done via public hearing and change the law because it's written in the law.
Yeah, and I think, and I know I was anticipating you asking me about fines. And I have on several different occasions given to Chuck and I think I gave it to Emily. There's a lot of violations that are not in our local law anymore and they keep coming up. So Chuck was unaware of this until several months ago. And I don't know what he's done or what he thinks about it. And they, a lot of the former provisions were repealed because they were in, they were not compatible with the ENT law, New York State ENT laws who preceded our local laws. So I have not had any communications with Chuck since I gave him all this information. He had not received it before and I think that was sort of at the beginning of the summer, so, you know.
I know the World University Games commitments is three years a week, so.
So.
Can we do it at the same time, fines and the 8 o'clock? Changes in fines.
Yes, I, if, but I think the fines might be able to be changed by resolution.
There's a chunk of them that can and a chunk of them that can't. We do have that broken out and Emily's gone through which ones can and can't. So we just have to figure out which ones can and put those into the public hearing.
Can we give, it sounds like we're gonna give that down. Emily, she did a great job, Spirit, I do the last ones. Can we give her that task again?
She's already done it.
Yeah, she already admitted it.
Okay, so we can do that.
Well, I haven't reviewed it, but I will. And I think Chuck has to be involved.
Well, yeah, because of the ones that got repealed, we gotta make sure they come out. And she did go through and verify that what we have listed is what is actually in the law because we ran into that issue with parking tickets. We were charging $25 according to local laws.
35.
So we, we did change that.
Oh, when I mentioned Emily, I meant having her coordinate with Chuck in whatever apartment.
She's been working with Chuck too much, she's been working with everybody.
So if that's possible to be done by the 19th, great. If not, we'll do it two weeks.
No, that will not be done because you gotta get public notice and paper and everything.
You can do the ones by resolution, though, right?
The ones by resolution maybe, but not anything that has to be changed.
So let's do that and we'll work on the others for the future, okay? And as far as the loading zone times go, is that something that's a local law or is that resolution?
I don't.
I think Chuck was under an impression it was resolution. He intended to, and Brad ordered the sign, so.
Okay.
There's one loading zone on Main Street, I forget where it was, where it is. Some of them say loading zone, no parking, and it gives the times. There's one that says just loading zone with no.
Oh, that's in front of the Bear House.
It can't technically be a loading zone, it's not big enough. So it's a really, it's called a drop off.
No, but.
Isn't that the one?
One says drop off, this one definitely says loading zone.
We'll be putting in that.
No, I think it's further south, but it has, it doesn't say those hours.
The new signs are coming.
And he ran out of time, ran and used what he had.
No, I know the one that's drop off only, but this one I've noticed does, just says loading zone and doesn't have the times like the other signs do. And it was empty all weekend.
He recycled the old ones.
Okay, so was there anything else? How about extending the hours of the parking? That's another thing we have to do by local law change, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll throw that on the Emily thing to get that as far along as we can.
Okay.
You're gonna be able to enforce it?
Okay.
Chuck says yes.
Yeah.
Okay. We remember we had to talk Kimball.
Yes.
We're not gonna forget that.
No.
Okay.
About the time?
Yeah.
Can you tell it right now?
Sure, that would be great, appreciate it. I don't think I have any commander mayor items coming up other than I leave on the 15th. And I will be back on the 22nd. I still don't know if we're stopping in New York. I think we are what the presentation is, but I'll know more when I get back. Commissioner reports. I can tell you one thing I've got coming was, remember I asked you guys if it was brown and black? And everyone said black. I talked to Sharice and she said she didn't care, but just make sure that it's chemicals that are used to dye it black are friendly with the lake because eventually it'll get in there. So Brad did look into that. And if that is the case, that the black is safe, that that's what we'll use. But if not, then we'll probably end up back to the brown. But just throw that out, talking about mulch. Fascinating stuff. Okay. And is it worth mentioning, I think everyone's read it in the paper, that we're right, feels like we're right back to the never ending story with the road detours and all that. But we literally are three and a half weeks away from potentially having everything go away and be all done, so. That's the good news.
I wouldn't put that in the paper.
Well, but that's the plan, I mean, unless something goes wrong, that is the plan, be buying propane tanks.
In mid-October, it'd be safer.
Yeah.
If it's raining, when they can't pay.
Well, that'll become a problem, but the whole plan is three and a half weeks, we'll see how they do.
Yep.
And it sounds like one of the big problems could be after everything's blacktopped, painting because it comes, we, it comes, it doesn't, it's in high demand this time of the year. And we have to have it dry and we have to have it now painting and warm.
September is always beautiful.
Oh, it's present.
And we did talk about maybe the lower part going away, but they'll be starting to chew the road up. That takes four days.
The road will?
The lower Main Street, the detour. But if they're gonna start chewing up the road, then they'll be coming back and blacktopping, so.
Still doing lateral.
You're gonna have two more.
Oh, yeah, they got one more. Did they finish the fire item today?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they're moving up here.
And it did tour the water plant and that's coming along great.
Yeah.
Yeah, Peter was there, so.
It's gonna be really good, and the whole job's going well. And they're making a lot of money. No, because they didn't know what to expect. It wasn't as bad as they thought.
Great, well, yeah, some of the filters weren't, still the work has to be done.
Yeah.
And I think you're, I don't know if that's a future article you want to do when they get a little further along. You know, half the town's gonna be done, and then they're going to go to the World University Games and the other half's going to be done. Just if you do want to go up and see what's being done, you're more than welcome. Or if it's just not something your readers would be interested in, I understand, but just to extend the offer.
Okay.
It's really cool, I mean, the whole process.
See, that's how boring we are.
The plan itself is really cool looking. You've never known from looking on the outside of the building until you walk in and see how big the tanks are and how much stuff is pushed through there.
And what's under the building.
I'm not, we can't even climb to all my.
These are high greets. It's really neat, the whole process.
So, have you on the future? Anything else on your commissioner reports? Okay, public comment?
I was here to talk about this STR stuff that you guys already pressed, so.
Surprise.
I'm less surprised than anything.
And things went smoother this time.
Thankfully, yeah, yeah.
I'm Laura. Yeah, so are you talking about changes to fines and parking times? Is that what you're trying to? Pretty much all of it, I guess. Okay. And extending hours that we charge for parking on Main Street. Okay. Is this, you said Emily is kind of putting together something that both the town and the local?
We had that Emily.
Oh, in front of our.
Yeah, Emily.
Yeah.
It was a village Emily.
Village Emily.
Yes, so she's, she's my assistant, she's working myself and she works for Art as well. But she is working on our current fine structure that we have for everything from parking tickets to parking in a loading zone. And yeah, the crosswalks, whatever. And as well as how much we charge for parking and how long we charge for parking. So we've made modifications to the parking rates. But in order to change how long we charge for parking, it has to go through local law. Okay, are you talking about increasing the fines again from 35?
Not on the parking tickets, no.
Okay.
Not at this time.
When the spots aren't turning ahead either.
So 35th Street, I'll tell you, excuse me.
Well, and the money that is generated is going to go back to maintenance, the industry pays now. Need more maintenance. And again, you know.
From the end of Sunday.
The reason we have parking meters is to turn parking spots. And so retail, that makes the commitment to stay open till 8:00 or 9:00 or 10:00. You have people parked there for three hours, go to a restaurant and, or employees or whatever.
No turnover to get.
There's no turnover to get into retail spots, so there's less incentive.
I was curious, do you guys have scheduled any more STR special meetings or town hall STR meeting?
Well, that's a good point. We need to finalize our position or happily. Because that's what needed to be done so that we can put out what we're going to have a town hall meeting. I think, if I'm not mistaken, our scenario on this was that we commissioned the insurance group to make a recommendation. They did, they brought us, now we make a recommendation and we have a town hall meeting where people discuss our recommendations. Are we at the point where we can pull that together? Does it mean to say we're thinking of finalizing it at our next workshop? That's the question I.
The only thing up in the air was the cat.
No, there were a couple other things.
You're gonna go this room, you can't fill the cat.
Right, so.
The option of in village and town residential of having the opportunity of renting, right, unlimited number of days with permanent expiring three year mark.
So I would, in my advice is.
And I think wasn't there hosted and not, still some hosted versus not hosted questions? What the definition of hosted's gonna be? No, I thought we.
Okay, I, I.
I just.
Hosted must be the legal address of owner?
Resident.
Or is there a better way to word that?
Well, I'll, I'll talk to him.
Okay, all right. So I think at our next meeting, which is a week from today, our next workshop, we'll plan, spend some time finalizing that. Let's plan at that point.
To set a public.
Well, if we're able to put out what we're recommending and then we'll do it at a town hall meeting, let people come and talk on that. And how long would that take us from the time that we give you what it's going to be before we can have a meeting?
Like the town hall meeting, since you're not making any local laws, final concrete decisions. I don't think there's any sort of 10 day waiting period, like.
But you have to put something out there for people.
Yeah, I, I can, so if you put it in the paper, it just takes a few days.
Did we want to meet with the town first?
I was gonna say that, but.
Before we met with the county?
You have no previous.
Well, but.
As we just, I've heard on four.
But if we, the only thing we, the fines need to be the same.
And the.
But if we, the only thing we, the fines need to be the same, and then we need.
And the, right, so fines and fees.
Other than that, we're going our own route, and the town's going their own route.
Yeah.
And we know what the town's doing, because we got the.
Well, and I've been sharing this with Emily, so Emily knows what we're doing.
Yeah, so it's, I don't think it's necessary, except to make sure that we have the same.
Well, I think, I, yeah.
And the fines.
Well, there's some definitions that they appear to be changing too, and we oughta be.
Right.
I think definitions.
Their definition of hosted should be the same as ours, their definition of unhosted should be the same as ours. And then, the existing, and the change of ownership, because you were gonna write that up, because you brought up some good points about how changes of ownership can happen, is that quite your?
And weren't they talking about something with regard to bed and breakfast?
That was land use, they were, as part of the administrative changes, in the land use code, they were wanting to eliminate bed and breakfast.
Bed and breakfast is hosted, in my opinion, except for you're not the owner, you could be.
Landowner.
So, let's plan on these questions that are being discussed right now, next Tuesday. We'll hammer the rest of those out, at that point, let's try to have a Saturday. And if you want me here, I won't be available.
But you gotta talk to the town about some of these things.
We do have to talk to them.
Right, but I think for us to have a town hall meeting, we could still get the public's input, and then incorporate that in what we discuss with the town. Okay. Yeah. By the time we get to the town, we should have an idea of what we want for sure, so that we can decide.
Well, aside from, aside from fines and fees, we also need to agree on what this STR compliance monitor is gonna do.
Giving enforcement.
Enforcement.
Yeah, so if the thirteenth is the week from today, I won't even be back until the twenty-second, or the twenty, like, we come back on the twenty-second. So that puts me into the last week of September, if you want a town hall meeting.
Then he won't be there.
I'm leaving the twenty-fifth.
Until?
Third.
Okay.
So we can, what about the twenty-fourth or third?
It's a sad one.
You're talking September. We, I mean, we have time to wait for our town hall meeting until the first week in October, that way everyone's back, is that right?
What day are you talking about?
Fifth. Sure, that's what, Wednesday.
I'm away.
Okay.
That's, that's right before the.
Oh, you're not back until, um.
The seventh.
Okay. Well, the town hall meeting is really just a chance for people to come and speak, how it'll be recorded, right?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
I mean, we're not answering questions of people, it's just a chance for people to come and give comments, so. Alright, well, let's plan to finalize when we're going to have our town hall meeting next week, how's that?
And I'll promote that, that that's what that workshop will at least partially be, because I have had a few people ask when the next meeting is, so.
Sure, okay.
I'll talk to you about, I wrote down what we've talked about.
Okay.
Okay. Not a question on STRs, surprisingly, for a reason. My question about, is there a water meter conversion process, a project afoot?
If you have an STR, you have to have a water meter in your building.
Right.
So there's not a, we're not going out and converting people.
Well, they converted, we had a water meter, but they converted.
It's, who's that?
They converted, I think to a remote read.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
So, if it was a manual read, they did put in remote reads, because it's, per, per safety, our, our whole system's remote at this point.
So the only houses that have metered water are STRs?
No.
No. So everybody who lives in the town is supposed to be on a meter, and STRs within the village have to be on a meter, and certain properties, I don't know how.
We're, we're moving towards that, where everybody has.
Yes, we're moving towards reading properties in, within the village. Way back when, you didn't have to have a meter if you lived in the village. As new people come in, we are, are purchasing homes, we are putting meters in the houses.
Well, we've done all the STRs that have permits at this point.
Yeah, it was one of the requirements of being an STR, that you have to have a, a water meter, because that way, if you're using more water within the village, it doesn't get put out on everybody else.
So, STRs are treated differently as to relates to water meters, that's what I'm trying to drive.
Yes.
In the village.
In the village. You think STR, I mean, I'm a businessman, you know where I put meters first? Residents' homes, but I'm not a politician, because they vote. Okay, so that comes clear. Who do you think uses more water in STRs, residents? Ninety days, plus whatever you spend in the house, but doesn't have any, I'm trying to understand the rationale.
But there'll always be a flat fee.
Yeah, there's always a flat fee, but the, I think the thought process behind it, and I was in all the meetings, but we're responsible for getting all the meters put in. The thought process behind it is, a lot of the STRs have hot tubs, and one of the regulations, because I used to clean them, you have to empty the hot tub every time and refill it, when you have new gas coming in, and that utilizes a lot of water.
Yeah.
So, in order to capture that, if they're going over two thousand cubic feet, they had to have a water meter.
Okay. One other question, not exactly an STR question. I was speaking, I live on the corner, or live and rent on the corner of Marcy and Hillcrest, okay? I value it. So, question I have is, speaking to my neighbor Andy, can't pronounce his last name.
Moringer.
Good guy. Were you talking about stop signs?
Excuse me?
Stop signs?
Stop signs.
We're talking about that.
It's a good idea, stop signs, and why not put in, you know, speed bumps? And Marcy, I think it ought to be a one-way street, you can't go up and down that street together, I mean, Andy now has set of boulders along his lawn, and a set of pedals, because people drive on his lawn, the fellow down from him, I don't know his name, has a nice copper boot for, you know, over his garage, probably no, he puts stones along his, the end of his driveway, it's dangerous. I might not walk down there with my dog, but from the city, so I'm accustomed to dodging cars, but why wouldn't we do that?
It's similar to Parkside.
Excuse me?
It's similar to Parkside, and that's two ways, you got more room on Marcy than Parkside, but, I'm, we're happy, we, we've started discussions on that, we've.
Stop signs?
Definitely, yes, stop sign, definitely, yeah. Speed bumps are very hard, of course, around here with the winter time.
Wow, so.
Yeah, Larry pointed out that they do them in Vermont, he's from Vermont, I'm, I'm not aware that you can do them, but I mean, I'm not there all the time, but he has children, and if I had them, I'd want people slowing down there, because I think it's Allen where you have your stop sign.
Of course, if you do put a four, if a four-way stop goes in, that would be better than a speed bump.
Freeway.
Yeah, it would be, yeah. One way, the reason I mention one way is because it seems to me, you know, I'm spending more time here in the last three years, that West Valley to O'naida, make a right on Hillcrest, make a left down Marcy into town, come up out of, up Marcy, make a right, go down O'naida, away, you know, going down to the end where the church is, making a left, it's a pretty steady flow. Tucker, following that path, it's a path that releases resistance, so make it one way, you know, make it one way, and we can reduce some of it for those people on Marcy.
Something we can discuss.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Were you done, Laura?
No, sorry. So, you're saying that you're gonna try to kind of finalize a draft of sorts at your workshop next week?
In other words, I think we're very close to having our recommendations, and we'll try to finalize that a week from today. And if we're successful with that, and we'll put those out to the public, and try to schedule a town hall at some point, have a discussion, a joint meeting with the town board, and see where we have commonality and what they have come up with. And as Peter mentioned, we're two different animals, so a lot of it is probably going to be different, but a lot of it will, like in fines and the enforcement will all be the same. That's just a guess at this point.
Part of the reason I ask is, because I was wondering if you guys had heard anything from the newly formed coalition of STR owners?
The resident host?
Um.
Or someone else?
It's about forty STR owners in the village, and they formed a coalition kind of to address, like, the direction you guys are taking with regulations.
The Adirondack Families Rental Association.
Oh.
What's the acronym?
News to me.
AFR. AFR.
Adirondack Families Rental Association, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, you're quoted in the press release.
Are you the president?
Well, maybe not surprised. No, but you're close. I've been the president of the HOA.
Well, I guess, well, they go to the public before coming to the board? We don't know anything.
I mean, if we know anything about, we've heard from the resident host group, a different one, because people who have a house here in Lake Placid, and then have a vacation rental as well.
Okay.
They were, until recently, referred to as gold medal hospitality, or we, we were referred to as, it's the same group. So I don't know if you've heard from them.
The only way we've really heard is a lot of letter writing over the last two years.
Probably seen more of that.
Well, and I hate to say it, but most of it's all the same stuff over and over again, unfortunately, half of it is people don't understand what we're even trying to do, but probably the world's start getting out what is and isn't happening.
Okay, a couple of, like, the, the main points that they had were not delineating between hosted and unhosted rentals, and then instead of kind of doing like a sunset on STRs in residential areas to just cap permits in those areas.
Yeah, so far we haven't discussed that with them, and that's not a direction at this point that we're headed.
Yeah.
I mean, our whole intent with this is to get STRs out of residential neighborhoods, over time, over time, to attrition, and the only reason we're allowing anyone new or to stay there long-term is if you're living there as your resident, just so you can afford to live here. That's the direction we're headed, and then the other part of your question was?
The hosted versus unhosted?
We are delineating that.
Right, but that, that's what I mean, that that's the reason we're doing it, that's the reason we're allowing hosted, is so that if you can't afford a house, but you wanna live here, you can. It's not so that someone who's going to come up three or four months of the year can take the house and afford it, and so that if you wanna live here, you can. That's the only reason we're allowing hosted in village residential, town residential.
And the host by definition is living here, so they have a place to live, where if it's unhosted, there's one more resident, there's no place to live. That's half the motivation.
Okay.
Just a clarification on the cap, it's a little nuanced, the really suggestion is that, it seemed like the original regulations did not allow for grandfather, if I'm correct.
Where are we, are you talking where now, Village Center or?
Village, Village.
Well, the original regulation says that the permits are not transferable, so if you were to sell your property, and you had a permit for an STR, the person buying your property, under the current law, would have to go and apply themselves, and be approved, and get a permit.
So, so, I don't know, I, I read an excerpt from the original regulations, I was in a court case that was, a number of thirteen, I think thirteen issues, so a number dismissed, one or two weren't, maybe three or four weren't actually, but grandfathering is mentioned, that's what I mentioned, right? So the, the wants to be capping is, rather than cap grandfathering, is grandfathering to a person, the current owner. The discussion in the group was grandfathering to a property.
But that doesn't get us where we're headed.
It would, if people choose, if you choose to buy a house, not rent it. People who bought these houses, in many, probably in most cases, bought them because they had a rental history, and paid what they paid for them because they had a rental history. It's a question of.
Which is glad you brought that up, because there's been a big discussion of why people pay more for these houses than if they weren't STRs. You just told us that they pay more because they.
Absolutely, in case, real estate seller on that basis.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no shame in that. I'm not at all ashamed to admit that, when I bought it from, I think, Lina Philo now, she gave me three years or five years of rental. It is attractive, I mean, I was buying property, I wasn't buying a property unless it was short-term rental, because I was working at telecom at the time, could only spend a month, maybe my family two months up here, so at any rate, it'd be foolish to deny that the property of an income is not worth more than the property without an income.
I agree with him.
Yeah, I don't think, is anybody in the short-term rental world disagreeing with that?
The question is, how much more?
Well, it's a good question, really, it's a good question. I mean, you could do it, you, you could do it the way a business would, but I mean, I don't think it's fair to do that, because people aren't as consistent in how they rent, some rent them through VOO and Airbnb, some rent through real estate. Real estates tend to spread them around, Airbnb tends to be more egalitarian, you get.
But I think your original question was grandfathering a person as a permit, so that if they sell the house, they can still be a vacation rental, is that what you're saying?
Grandfathering the property, you have, how many, you have eighty?
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think the answer to that, unless we change our minds, at this point, we're working to get rid of them, and we thought the most equitable and fair way was to wait until it changed ownerships, not just pass a law that said in two years, you're done.
Well.
So that was the equitable, fair compromise we made, not, and if we don't, we're basically not getting rid of them, because they can always sell to someone that now becomes a vacation rental. We've gotten nowhere.
Oh, granted, it's more equitable to grandfather than to cut them off, clearly, okay? To just cut them off and say, look, as a, you know, the twentieth of the month, you're no longer the short-term rentals, that would, that would probably, goes a little greedy for everybody involved.
But that's why we tried to be fair about this, and that's the reason we went with, once a house property changes, it gives us a long-range goal of not having any STRs in residential neighborhoods, or village residential, town residential.
Yeah, and, and by the way, I mean, I decline being a spokesman for the group, so I'm not speaking for the group, but I can tell you, there's a sentiment within, at least a number of members of the group, that they bought these houses under these conditions, you understand the argument, it's been in our letters, I'm sure, and what would make it more palatable, obviously, is if the property was grandfathered. Would they still remit, it's eighty, as I understand it, permits in the village.
Eighty unhosted in the village, right?
Yeah, unhosted in the village, so the question is, how much pain are they causing? And will they eventually, over time, trip? And I have a second-bedroom house on Hillcrest, would someone buy it to live in it? Well, the Rascos did, you know, and the family after them did, and I don't know that Lina Philo did, like, so, people do, but you know, you would still have a trip, and you'd have a lot of issues. It'd be more palatable, the question is, how much pushback do you get? It looks like, because you'll get more with the current rules than if you made it property-specific.
That's all. Okay, appreciate your comment.
But I'm not the spokesman for the group.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, the last one I had, I mean, I think I know about, was just hoping that you could overlook on why you're excluding the village and town residential areas, and the South Lake village portion from the corridor extension.
Actually, that's what we're.
They're included.
They're, they're the ones that are.
Or, I'm sorry, including and excluding the Main Street corridor.
At this point, we don't foresee any major changes to the Main Street corridor or Village Center.
In existing law.
So we're lifting, doesn't mean we can't still make changes in that area, but at this point, we feel we can lift that. And that's where we're trying to promote growth, so we're not including that extension.
Okay.
So, September thirtieth, it can apply.
September thirtieth, that's.
So that's when it expires, existing law, or Village Center, the Main Street corridor.
Okay, that was all I had, thanks.
Okay.
Do you have something back there?
Yes, pardon, pardon my confusion, but there were some maps issued a while back, and how do those relate to the conversations you're having currently with, you know, with what you're presenting, do those hold? Or it's, those maps no longer are relevant?
I think I can answer that, you guys tell me.
It's the zoning district.
Yeah, and that was, what was Dean's group called?
That was the land use code committee.
Right, okay.
And they made that presentation to, at the school.
So they made, they were looking for feedback, and they, it was a commission that we put together, they gave us feedback.
So don't look at the maps.
Well, they gave, we asked them to give us feedback, hold public hearings, and then tell us their recommendations, and then they gave us their recommendations, and we've been deliberating for the last three and a half months to come up with our recommendations.
The maps you should look at are the zoning maps that designate, for example, village residential, town residential, Village Center, you should look at, those are the maps that are applicable to what the board is discussing.
Okay.
And they're on the town in North Elba's website, under Planning and Development, Land Use Code.
And one last thing, keep in mind, when we say village and town residential, those are both in the village.
Just based on lot size.
It's based on lot size, if a lot is small, it's village residential, if it's larger. It's based on lot size. If a lot is small, it's village residential. If it's larger, it's town residential. Then the town, there's village and town residential.
Okay.
Signal Hill, that area is considered town residential because those lots are half an acre or more.
Got it.
We try to make this as confusing as we can, so don't feel bad.
We didn't set this up. Somebody else a long time ago set it up.
It is tough. I mean, we've been on the board how long? I'll bet there's still questions that could surround between what's village, what's town. We wouldn't get into the old one. That takes three lawyers to explain that one.
All right, another, a little slightly different topic.
Carefully, you're the spokesman.
This is not on STRs. You know, I was looking at taxes and. I have to say that the village, in my view, and I don't even look back as far as two thousand eighteen, but I'm sure if I went through the last twenty. I have to commend you on how well you managed to see your budget, really. Our taxes have not gone. I've heard a lot of complaints about taxes at some of these meetings. And, you know, I live down, down in Pottent County, taxes have gone up significantly, but, I mean, I looked at my village taxes in two thousand eighteen. They were thirty-two seventy-two. At thirty-six thirty-nine this year, they've gone up four hundred dollars, because this is three point seven percent increase in the, in the rate. And I also see a seventeen point nine percent increase in the assessment of my home. So at any rate, but still.
Well, the guidelines we have to operate under is the government, state of New York tax cap. And the reason you went up three point seven was it was because we didn't during the pandemic, we captured that ability.
Yeah.
And most of the, it was a lot of hard work to stay under that tax cap, but a lot of that was done through attrition of employees. And so far, we've been able to maintain services the best we can, but at some point, it'll be, it's a main point between what we can offer and stay under the tax cap.
Yeah, but I think, I don't think, you know, I was looking at it because of the complaints I've heard, you know, at some of the meetings. And I have to say, it's commendable, but I would, I'm going to be critical of it. I'd say you guys are doing a pretty good job.
We'll keep you as our spokesman. We'll keep you as our spokesperson.
Yes, we did increase the rate by three, a little over three percent. But the actual rate itself went down.
Yeah.
In comparison, because of the assessed values going up.
With the tax gap, even if all the assessments went up twenty-five percent, we can't, we don't get any more money. It's just, either way, it affects the taxpayer, right? And we can only have the same amount of money, but two percent increase a year under the state's tax cap.
Yeah, I don't think, it's not crazy, I don't think residents appreciate that. I don't think they understand how it works. And if you do the numbers, taxes go up, you know, I would assume that this year, between last year and this year, inflation going the way it is, I'm sure the cost of the business, the government is up significantly.
It's interesting now. Is there anything else? Do we have anyone? Mark C. We have Mark C. online. Is there anything you would like to ask of the board?
No, I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for attending. Okay, if there is nothing else to come for the board, motion to adjourn. So moved. I'm David.
Hi.
Okay, thank you for your time.